I'll call the November council meeting to order. I want to welcome all our citizens, our guests, visitors. Thank you so much for coming on tonight and also thank our citizens that's watching us via the social media networks as well as channel two. I want to start with the opening prayer and our pledge. So we would, Councilman Wally, would you lead us in prayer followed by our pledge?
Let's pray. In the name of Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, glory to Jesus Christ, we come to you, Lord, and just thank you for you, for the privilege of being your servants, for the responsibility you've given us to look out for the well-being of this community in this role, to serve in that capacity. We ask for wisdom and discernment. We ask for courtesy and consideration for one another. We ask for the opportunity to find what's best and to do it in a way that will magnify your name and lift up those throughout our community. Thank you for each person in our town, for each family, for the sovereignty that you have over our community. We ask that you would bless us and anoint us and particularly as we enter this Thanksgiving season, make us even more mindful of how good you are to us. We ask in your precious name. Amen.
Thanks for that. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you will, call the roll, Ms. Clerk. Oh, yeah. I've been about that.
President.
Here.
Mr. White.
Here.
Mr. King.
Here.
This right here, this thing here.
Here.
All right, we have three different sets of minutes to approve. We'll start with the first set of minutes from our October fourteenth council meeting. Are there any corrections or deletions to those minutes? Is there a motion to approve? I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion on the second. Everybody cast your votes. Motion carries next, October fourteenth slum hearing meeting. No corrections or deletions to those minutes. Is there a motion to approve? Motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion on the second. If you would, everyone cast your votes. Motion carries, last set of minutes of the October fourteenth beer board minutes. Is there any changes or deletions to those minutes? We're here, motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion on the second. Everyone please cast your votes. Motion carries. On my report, first I want to thank all the citizens and everyone that was a part, particularly the Bolivar Central High School, for participating in our Veterans Day program. Also, I also thank Mr. Wally, he was our speaker for that day. And thank all our citizens and staff that came out and helped us put on the Veterans Day celebration. And also just want to take the time to thank our veterans for serving our country and appreciate what you've done for our country. Let you guys know that we'd be closed for Thanksgiving on Thursday, next Thursday and Friday. So I would like to encourage all the citizens and staff and everyone to enjoy their families during the holiday season and let's be thankful for what God has given us. December second be our Christmas parade, six P.M. December fifth will be our employee Christmas celebration at eight A.M. We're doing a breakfast this year, be sponsored by The Biscuity. They're doing the meal, we'll be giving out longevity checks and having just a meal to show appreciation to our employees. So that will be December fifth at eight A.M. You guys able to attend, I know a lot of you guys be working, but if you have that time, would you stop by? That will be December fifth at eight A.M. Two people we would like, I'd like to acknowledge tonight that actually made their transition a couple of weeks ago, but these guys both have been very invaluable to our city. So first I would like to do a resolution of respect for Mr. Charles Terry Engel. Whereas our Lord God Almighty called Mr. Terry home from this world November third, 2019, and whereas he was a resident of Atworth, Georgia, born in Savannah, Tennessee, and graduated from Hardin County School and University of Memphis, and worked as a manufacturing engineer until his retirement. And whereas Terry was a former resident of Bolivar Hardeman County and contributed many accomplishments during his lifetime and demonstrated outstanding leadership by his service, and whereas he is survived by his delightful wife and two wonderful children, grandchildren, and family. And whereas Tony enjoyed playing, Terry enjoyed playing golf, traveling, and treasured his family pets, dearly loved, delivered love to his family and enjoyed spending valuable time with them. And whereas he was an outstanding public servant, as he served as co-chair of the Industrial Board of the City of Bolivar and Secretary of Treasurer from nineteen ninety-nine until twenty-fourteen. He also served as the president of the Bolivar Rotary Club, and he was a member of the Hardeman County Country Club and the First United Methodist Church. And whereas the family and friends are deeply saddened at his departure, now therefore be resolved by the mayor and board of councilmen of the City of Bolivar, this resolution, by this resolution, we deeply regret the passing of this fine public servant and that we expressed to his wife and family our heartfelt sympathy in their loss. So I ask you guys to be in prayer for Mr. Engel's family. And next one here is a memorial resolution for Mr. Bill Dean. Whereas Mr. Bill Dean passed from this life on November tenth, 2019, and whereas Bill is survived by his wife Carol of forty-one years, two sons, two daughters, and four grandchildren and a great-grandchild. And whereas Mr. Dean moved from Shelby County to Hardeman County after his retirement of forty years from Congra, and whereas he was a veteran of the U.S. Armory Survey and the one of the first airborne as a paratrooper and was a member of the American Legion, and whereas Bill enjoyed working in his garden, hunting, fishing, and was an avid sports fan of golf, baseball, and football, and where he played with the New York Giants. And whereas he was a member of the Bolivar Farmers Market Board of Directors from the initial startup in twenty-eight, twenty-two thousand eight, and he helped the organization and successful the market. He served as the market manager from twenty-twelve to twenty-thirteen, and whereas he contributed many accomplishments during his lifetime and demonstrated outstanding management by his service, was an active member of the Hickory Valley Baptist Church, and whereas he dearly loved his family and enjoyed spending valuable time with them. And whereas the family and acquaintances of Bill Dean are deeply saddened at his departure, we are all touched by his kind spirit. And now therefore be resolved by the mayor and board of councilmen of the City of Bolivar that this resolution be passed with deeply regret of the passing of this fine public servant and that we express to his wife and family our heartfelt sympathy in their loss, presented this eighteenth day of November, 2019. So if you guys would just like to acknowledge their service, both of these gentlemen to our city, and just thank them for what they've done and also just be in prayer for their families. So thank you for that. That will conclude my report. Moving to the standing committee reports, the, starting with the electric department. The BEA Board received an unqualified audit report with no findings from ATA of Jackson, Tennessee. And in audit terms, unqualified is a good thing. So congratulations to BEA. And also give another congratulations to Mr. Johnny Fortune on his retirement. He had a nice little celebration there a couple of days ago. So that concludes the electric report. Moving on next to utilities, Mr. Cliff Henson.
Mayor, council. The Bolivar Utility Board met Wednesday, November thirteenth. The items we discussed, first of all, we opened up the bids for the renovation of our new, of our shop down at Jackson Street. We only received one bid, contacted several contractors, but they weren't, their timeframe and the way their work schedule was, they weren't able to bid on it. And then auditors told us if we could get one bid in, we could accept that. So Mr. Donnie Spence came in with the quote of forty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars, and Utility Board recommend that we do this contingent on a motion from the council. So, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate a motion on accepting that bid.
All right, this is for the renovations at the utilities department. One bid from Mr. Donnie Spence for forty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars. Yes, sir, Mr. Wally?
Just a question, Cliff. I guess anytime we get one bid for something, I want to ask you, how do you assess that? You think that's reasonable and we don't have anything to compare it to?
Well, to be honest, I don't really know. I know I can go back on Donnie's record. He's worked with us in the past, and he did not know that he was not going to be, he was going to be the only bidder. So I feel pretty certain that Donnie came in with a pretty good bid, but I have nobody to compare it with and the work, and the extent of work that we're going to do down there, it seems pretty reasonable on the bid that he did quote us. So that's really all I've got to go with on that. Thank you.
Ms. McKenna.
Is that something that's in the budget?
Yeah, we actually budgeted fifty thousand for this project, and it came under bid, and then we're going to be, the material's going to go over just a little bit as far as material, but it's pretty tight.
But you have, anybody else have any questions? Is there a motion that we approve the bid from Mr. Donnie Spence for forty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars? I have a motion as a second. I have a motion as a second. If everyone would please cast your votes. All right, motion carry.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, you've got a report here. We had the board approve for us to apply for a public entity partners grant. And what this is, is kind of like a security grant that we applied for the last couple of years. And what that is, is a matching grant. They will match up to forty-five hundred dollars. And this project will be used for the security of our water treatment plant. We've had some situations over there in the past couple of years. The state is kind of wanting us to secure this a little bit better. We don't have a fence all the way around the facilities, and this would help with the security. So we're going to apply for this one. The total price on the security cameras is going to be about eighty-eight hundred dollars, and our part would be about forty-two, forty-four. So I think there's going to be a resolution that you guys have to pass tonight in order as to apply for that. The other item I have is we had a state audit from the Tennessee Public Utility Commission last month. It was a three-day audit. They came in and checked us quite thoroughly on our gas, pipeline safety, and all of our record-keeping, and there were no violations found. And I want to commend our employees down there at the department for doing a really good job in keeping everything up to par and day-to-day operations going well. So I really commend them for that. And our gas prices for this month staying at sixty-five cents. I hope that stays next month with cold weather.
It's going to get cold.
So we'll keep our fingers crossed on that. But that concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Henson. Also, thank you guys, I'll cook for the Veterans Day celebration. Thank that. Thank you for that. Next we have fire chief Price.
Good evening, everyone. My report, my report. Fire call, total fire call for the month of October, forty calls. We had twenty-five in the city and fifteen in the county. Fire injury, we had zero. Training hours, three fifty-one. Smoke alarm installed, seventeen. And during the month, also during the month of October, that's Fire Prevention Month, we came in contact with seven hundred and forty adults and kids to teach them about fire safety. And the fire department is going to have the annual Christmas dinner, December the twelfth at six P.M. over at the fire station, and I'm giving open invitation to all you guys sitting up here. This is my report.
Did you say anything about the flu?
The mayor's supposed to be sitting talking.
Oh, I don't know, I'm sorry. I didn't know what I was supposed to be talking about. Well, you up here, go ahead. You hand that to him, it's going to be at your place, so you tell us about it.
Okay, we are having a free flu shot, and it's going to be going on with, conjunction with the health department, and it's free, no insurance needed, no money when you come by. It's going to be tomorrow only, starts at nine A.M. to twelve P.M. And like I say, we not turning anybody down, but you need a flu shot, just come by the fire station. You don't have to get out your car, it's going to be drive-through.
That is for the citizens of Bolivar and also for Hardeman, all of Hardeman County?
All of Hardeman County.
All of Hardeman County and citizen of Bolivar.
Yes, I'm sure.
I thought, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, I'm sure if anybody can come from Fayette County, McNair, they won't turn them down, because it's, like I said, it's something the health department doing statewide.
Cross the state, yeah.
Yes. Dinner, and make sure if I won't get you wrong date.
December the twelfth.
December the twelfth.
What time?
Six P.M.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah, over at the station.
Oh, yeah, yeah, six o'clock, that's good. Thank you, Chief, thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chief, Chief Price. Next we have police, Y Chief Jones is coming. Larry pressed the wrong button when he tried to vote.
I did, I apologize. I hit the green button, but it said no, because I didn't look.
Yeah, it said no.
It did say no. That's what I hit, number one. I hit number one.
Sure, he hit number one, so.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure to clear the, clear the error that I did vote yes twice. Okay, thank you. But I do hit the three.
I'll hit it for you next time. Go ahead, Chief.
Good evening, my report is as follows. We had six hundred and fifty-nine calls for service, a hundred and fifteen citations were issued. We had eighteen accidents, three were injured, fifteen were property damage. Total of twenty-three arrests, five of those were juveniles, eighteen were adults. Special events, we worked five musics on the square. We had our breast cancer awareness card, we had two different showings. We did fire emergency festival with the fire department, dog walk, craft fair, and had a trunk or treat, and we had in-service, had a total of four hundred and sixty hours of training for the month.
Thank you, Chief.
I have to say, Chief, while I'm here, yeah, I need to say this, that the in-service, y'all done an excellent job.
Thank you.
In-service, because we had a couple of police departments from other agencies that come over. So I have to say that y'all done an outstanding job there.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
Next, Parks and Rec, Mr. Currie Stack.
Mayor, council. My report follows. We've added wood chips to all our playgrounds. This additional safety surface brings it up to proper depth. Also, we continue to work on the trails at Sand Beach Lake. Our adult volleyball league started on November first, and the youth soccer ended on the twelfth. Currently, we are registering for our youth co-ed basketball leagues for six to ten-year-olds. These signups will run through December third. Also, this will be our first year to join the Junior Grizzlies program. By joining and paying thirty-five dollars league fee, each player will receive a reversible jersey, shorts, basketball, and a ticket to a Memphis Grizzlies home game. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Stack. Next, streets and sanitation, Mr. Eddie Vander.
Good afternoon. We installed a crosswalk sign between the courthouse and post office, and we repaired the streetlights due to the T-dot cutting the lines of our electrical lines. We're working on putting up Christmas lights and decorations. We've got a new garbage truck in, and it's working real well, and the garbage pickup was four hundred and fourteen tons this month, for last month. I want to thank all y'all for voting for that new garbage truck.
Ed, I have one, because I have a lot of people, citizens calling me on the bulk items in October, and I think I got the understanding that the truck was down part of October. So are y'all extending that to this month?
I hope we finished it up last week, which was two weeks into November.
Okay, okay. I haven't looked at the young lady's yard lately, but she's been calling me, but.
At one that you called me about, demolition and that, that's really what we.
On Tate Road, it wasn't but just a little. Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
His lattice work and all kind of demolition stuff and that.
Oh, I don't know, but okay. I just want to make sure.
Woodbury and Tate.
Yeah, uh-huh, okay.
Right, thanks.
Thank you.
I'll just say about it, the new sanitation pickup has been going real smooth and a lot of compliments. We've had some issues, but we've worked through a lot of them. And I just want to commend Eddie, his guys, the driver Ricky, he's doing good. I followed him today and watched him, he's working that truck pretty good, so proud of that. Mr. Wally, that you have a question?
That's what I was going to ask, I just want to hear a little bit more about what the experience so far had been.
Yeah, I think it's been, been good. I'm, I'm happy to see it. The other day, when the first, first day it ran, it was thirty degrees outside, and we didn't have to worry about anybody riding the truck. We had that going, so I think it's been going good. And I commend the citizens on, on putting them where they should. We, like I said, we still have a few, but I think they working through the majority of them.
And Mayor, also with you having this garbage truck, does it still mean that we're not going to lay nobody off, right?
No, uh-uh.
Okay, I've been getting that question last, so I thought of bringing it up, let the mayor say it himself.
No, uh-oh, he, those guys, we got a full street sweeper, we got a street sweeper that was running every day now. They have started doing the leaf blower here. I think they've been, Eddie been using them a lot on the Christmas light stuff, catching up on that, so.
Mayor, I'd also like to say that a lot of people have asked me, when would they be able to purchase another can of garbage?
We met about that, Eddie had been talking about it a lot. We trying to work through it all and out to see whether it be the fair process, and if, we called into some other cities, a lot of them don't allow another can, but I'm not saying we not going to do that, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out what would be the best process and the fair way of, of doing it, whether we charge for a can or how we going to do that. But many of it has been talking about, and once we get all that work through, but right now, though, we said we don't want to try to do it until January, until we make sure everybody has gotten their first can and the route has started working, before we start putting out more, so. Next, planning, Mr. Golden.
Bolivar Planning Committee met Monday, October twenty-first, a subdivision plot presented on behalf of Harold and Melissa Trailer, who combined in three lots located on Walnut Road and the Urban Grove Community Boundary Area. We approved that plot. That's all we have on the planning committee.
Thank you, Mr. Golden. Next, library, Ms. Becca White.
Good evening. I want to apologize right away to the council if your report says September, this is for the month of October. I just somehow did not get that changed. But for the month of October, we took in one thousand one hundred and seventy-four dollars and thirty-five cents from donations, copies, fines, and faxes. We had twelve programs with sixty-six participants. One thousand five hundred and forty-nine was our material circulation, six hundred and twenty-four computer users, two thousand eight hundred and eighty-six Wi-Fi users with four hundred and fifty-two from Reed's. We had about twenty-seven kids to attend our trick-or-treat at the library, had games and candy and some things for them to do. We also are planning our annual thank you breakfast for the city officials and county officials in December. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council. You should have a copy of my report. Building consultations for the month of October, ten. Building permits written, two. Building inspections, thirty-seven. Plumbing inspections, thirty-five. Mechanical inspections, thirty-five. Courtesy notices, twenty-five. And we have did COs for the fast-paced clinic, which is now open and operating. The cricket store, which is open and operating, also did a CO for building two at Pecan Grove, and they're booking those apartments, renting them out, and getting building three ready. And we've done inspections some on building four already and starting on building five, so. And I just want to give a quick update specifically for the, yeah, the slum here, slum board. Seven twelve Morgan Street, wish you guys could drive by there and take a look at it. The man came out, that's the one we almost took down, but he came out, cleaned it up. It looks good, got a for rent sign in the yard, and he's still working on it, getting it ready, but outside, we're very well pleased with. Five fourteen West Jackson's cleaned up some around the house, looks a lot better than it did. Karen Drive is in the process of cleaning up. Three eighty-nine East McNeil has cleaned up. Miss Marcella Barrett's house on East McNeil, house been taken down, lot cleared, looks good down there. Three thirty-one East McNeil, I'm having to actually contact the nursing home, because that house has been given over to the nursing home, and it's a little bit different ballgame playing with the nursing home than it is with an individual. So we got to tiptoe through that one, but we're, we're still working on it. Two twenty-two Third Street's cleaned up, looks good, and one oh eight and one twelve Poplar Street, they're still working on those. So we'll have our meeting in December and see where we're at with those that we move to that point. Thank y'all.
Hello, councilmembers. All right. Bolivar Main Street hasn't met since we attended the governor's meeting. We've had several board members have had illnesses in their families and death. Ms. Deborah Brassfield lost her husband, and her brother's really ill right now. Bolivar after work is still going well. We're looking to build on that as we get more businesses downtown, as they open this spring and this fall. We're currently preparing for the Bolivar Christmas Parade, and Bolivar Main Street Parade Committee, and myself and Lynn Price, and Chief Mike Jones, and Ms. Sarah Rice have been meeting regularly. We're currently working on the design for the Santa Village, and we have a twenty-five-foot tree that we're proud to be displaying this year. Finally, we've met twice with Lowe's, and South Jackson, they're interested in potentially sponsoring some of the Bolivar landscape in the spring. In exchange for that, they want to donate this, donate plants, I'm sorry, and mulch. In exchange for that, they want us to give them a small signage for all the landscaping efforts. That concludes our report.
There's no old business. The new business, Resolution nineteen zero zero eight, a resolution establishing a complete streets policy for the City of Bolivar. And basically, this is something that the state is requiring us to do, and we have to get everything in ADA compliance, so this is what this resolution is. And Mr. Eddie and Mr. Watkins and I think Kathy, been all, putting all this stuff together. Did you have something you were going to say on it, Eddie? Did you have something you wanted to say on it? You was looking at, I thought you wanted my heart. Any questions on the resolution? Is there a motion that we approve this resolution nineteen zero zero eight? I have a motion, is there a second? All right, motion and second. Everybody cast your votes. Green is yes, red is no. Motion carry. All right, next, Resolution nineteen zero zero nine, a resolution approving a contract with Simmons Bank, CBNS, Centennial Bank, the Bank of Hardeman County to become a depository bank of Bolivar municipal funds. If y'all remember, we talked about this at the last meeting. Basically, this is another thing that we have in the past. We got all the rates and all that stuff from the banks, we presented that to y'all last meeting, and now this is the resolution that's actually passing.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion on the second. Everyone cast your votes. Motion carries. Next is Resolution nineteen zero one zero. This is a resolution that, to participate in the grant, we have to have this authorization to apply for that. That's what Cliff just mentioned to you guys. So this is a resolution to apply for those matching funds from public, public entity partners. Motion, is there a second? Motion and a second. Cast your votes. Motion passes. Anybody on communities of development? No one on communities of development. Before we adjourn, there is a beer board meeting immediately, immediately following this one. So if you're on the beer board, if you would, just keep your seats. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion on the second. Cast your votes. Oh, okay. Hold on. We'll go back. I'm sorry. I didn't know, I didn't see you. We'll go back to the communities.
See how my colleagues feel about this, looking into the fire department. Wanted to see, can we get together and see, can we do anything about helping with the, you know, the turns of people leaving? I know we lost a couple of firefighters that are outside the community of Jackson, Memphis, wherever. And I found out they don't want to get paid, but that was the old twenties. And if we can see, see what we can do to help the fire department, you know, to do a little better, what it can help keep the firefighters that's already trained and not hired, someone not trained. Cost effective, if everybody, I'm not saying do anything, just talk about it. Bring it to the table and if we can do something, just do something. If not.
Well, y'all. We can get some comparisons, and y'all too much old. If we get some comparisons to other cities and municipalities and stuff outside to the fire department and I can get somebody to give y'all copies of all that so y'all can see where the, where the numbers stack up. And I, I do, I will say that Jackson, we not only do this, Bolivar had this problem, every city surrounding Jackson, they take a lot of our guys off once they get trained. And it's right up the road, they drive there and get paid a lot more. But we can get with chief and put that together if that's okay. Everybody good with that? Chief Will, I'm pretty sure he probably got it already printed out. Yeah, so we'll put that together and I'll get it to y'all and we'll, we'll discuss it. But it has came up multiple times, so. All right, we had the same motion and second to adjourn. All in favor, you cast your votes. All right. Motion carry. That's as long as it ever took you.